Call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Let the record show all board members are present except for Mr. Ritter. Please rise and let's take the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, do you have an agenda before you can get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Square, Mr. Welker, thank you guys very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Information proposals or comments from the audience. Mr. Payne, do we have anything?
No requests this month, sir.
Okay. Just kind of move on from that then. Yeah, we'll just move right on. So information reports, Board Presidents' report. The Booster Golf Tournament was a couple of weeks ago, July 12th. It went really great. Appreciate everybody that participated. Dr. Benyon received the most holes played award. Didn't get him anything, but way to go. Yeah, not a problem. We were glad you made it through the day, but it went great. And then the foundation's mix and mingle afterwards. It was wonderfully well attended and there's a lot of people there and looked like it went, it was a great, great outing. So looking forward to getting to use the proceeds for this year. And August 12th, back to school, so we'll be there for that. I heard there's going to be barbecue and fun kickoff. Got ready for this.
Took us all night to back.
Yeah, we're about tired of this summer and ready to get back to it. That's all I've got. So hand it over to you, Dr. Benyon.
Thank you. We've had some really students highlighted this summer, actually at the end of the school year, that we just want to mention. First off, thanks to J.C. from the Southeast Missouri for the great story on Delina Diaz. You did awesome. That was fantastic. She, Delina is our outstanding young people in class of 2025 who was earned over $35,000 in scholarships and will be attending biomedical engineering at Mizzou. Delina is an exceptional student, but also was an incredible student leader during his time at Cape Central. And I encourage you to read the article. It's a great feature. Also, history was made for Schools USA Nationals event in Atlanta. The Cape Career Tech Center does awesome always at the event, but took home two gold medals. First place national, first place medals in CNC five-axis milling programmer and emergency medical technicians, EMTs. Also, Mr. Cook, who's behind the camera right now, is with us behind the camera. And he had two students take home the bronze in video production. Very impressive. And these are national winners. So we're really proud of all the things that you do at the CTC. And Mr. Cook, we're proud of you as well. You've done an awesome job taking over for Randy. So thank you. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on. CSIP Program Evaluations Elevate One: Culture Climate Retention of Staff.
Thank you. I will jump right into this. It's a longer rather, or longer report than some of our others we cover. So I don't want to go through this just reading item by item. I'm just going to kind of summarize and then answer any questions you might have at the end. Obviously, elevate one. Create and sustain a positive culture of practices to recruit, retain, and reward highly qualified personnel. So this encompasses all of our certified and all of our classified staff across the district. As you can see on the first page, we spend nearly $46 million annually right now on those personnel expenses. We talk about this a lot, but people are our biggest expense, right? Personnel and benefits. That makes up about 70% of our budget annually. The action steps, like I said, I'm not going to read through these. These action steps were developed the year we wrote the CSIP. The only thing we've done is add to this list. One significant thing to mention on the very first one, it says use multiple funding sources to provide teacher retention support across the district. DESI actually eliminated the teacher retention grant funds. So moving forward, all of these allocations were 100% district funded to have these items. Bullet point three on that same list, partnerships with local universities. We've received great feedback about our regional educator advantage partnership we have with CMO for tuition discounts, both online and for pathways for parents. We just had a roundtable discussion with all the regional superintendents a couple of weeks ago. And we actually have about 20-plus school districts across our region participating in that now. So that's helping educators all across Southeast Missouri. Bullet point seven, we remained in place as having one of five top highest starting teacher salaries in all of the Southeast region. We were currently locked in our spot for four again this year. And then we continue to have our perfect attendance drawings for staff where we did a collaboration with the foundation. So we're actually providing random drawings every six weeks for our classified and certified staff. And then they have an opportunity to win grand prizes at the end as well, such as like hotel stays, destination type things. And then I believe it's the fourth page, kind of showing you the breakdown since the inception of our continuous school improvement plan. Big thing was increasing our certified teacher retention rate. Our baseline data was 80.5% the year we developed the plan. 2324, that increased to 82.7. And then currently, we are at 86.2. So we had a 3.5% increase in teacher retention, which exceeded our goal for this school year. And then our three-year rolling average that we talked about, we would start tracking, is actually just over 83%, which from all the reports and research I could find, we're exceeding the state average in Missouri right now. It does come up a lot about where does that data come from and what sources are used. We do not factor in staff retirement and/or use of staff under a critical shortage or a war waiver from year to year, because those are things you can't control, whether they have to exit the job. Overall, for the rating, we gave an average or a report of above average due to the increased retention rate alone as we move into our three-year rolling average. But the last couple of pages I wanted to hit on, we talked a lot last year about engaging in staff rounding sessions. So this is a strategic intentional method for getting feedback from employees at all levels. This started with just using more of a casual Google form type thing to type responses in. We've actually formalized that, or Mr. Russell has, to a program called Jot Forms now. This year, we collected over 225 responses from staff across the district. And we only got to run that program for one semester. So then we used artificial intelligence to take all the findings to do a thematic analysis of the feedback provided from our employees. And that's what you're going to see on that last page. So what the district is doing well based on those responses, we excel in supportive staff and leadership relationships across the district. Positive student-staff relationships and a focus on academic and social growth for our students. Areas we need to improve in, our facility and instructional spaces. We know that's being addressed through our 10-year facilities plan we just adopted across the district. Staffing and compensation and being more competitive in that area across the board is something we're always focused on. And then communication and decision-making from the district level all the way down to the building level. Making sure you have consistent methods of communications layered. Action steps moving forward, we're going to increase the volume of rounding sessions and face-to-face opportunities with staff. Continue to prioritize mentoring and leadership development through increased programming for additional staff compensation. We talked a little bit about this before. This is the first year we will offer career ladder for teacher mentoring across the district. So that gives you the opportunity to earn either 1,500, 3,000, or an additional $5,000, which is a pretty good stipend. And then the last thing, just providing timely updates on facility improvements as we continue to progress through that plan that was just passed with IDS. I know it's a big report. It's a lot of information. I'd be happy to answer any questions about our action steps, the teacher retention data, or the rounding session summary.
What was the percentage, the response rate on that survey that you did?
For rounding?
No, you said you had 200 and something people on the Jot Form.
That was, yeah, that's the rounding.
Yeah, so on a rounding, yeah, it's not actually optional response. It's intentional. It's the supervisor going to the employee and just having that conversation. And then we've just developed a form where you can track the feedback quickly. It usually takes about three to five minutes to have a conversation like that. Next year, another layer we're going to add on. One of the questions is who helps you? Who supports you in doing your job better across the district? What we couldn't do this year with just launching that, we want to automate a process to send out thank you letters to staff across the district where it shows they've been recognized by another staff member in a rounding session. So it's got a little bit more of a personal touch.
Are there some that did not participate?
Yeah, so we're roughly, let's call it 220, 225 responses. We've got about 710 benefit eligible employees across the district. So we're just barely getting into those first couple of phases.
It was just a semester too. Okay, data, it's just one semester.
Yeah, so we went from this year, it was basically January through about May 15th. That's the only period we captured.
Congrats on improving retention rate.
Yeah, that's really great.
Value of asset is the focus that we're here.
And that's really, I mean, if you want to sing praise, that's our building leaders that are causing that. I mean, it's those relationships with their teachers, being supportive. We had tons and tons of new teachers over the last two to three years, as you guys know. And the feedback shows the make or break to whether those people stay in your organization as if they feel like they're supported or not. So that just speaks testaments to the work they're doing at the building level.
I'm sorry. I only ask that question because I like some of the questions. And I would want to know how many, you know, engaged in that.
And we have to get better as a cabinet at getting out, engaging in more rounding sessions. That's one of our goals for next year.
Well, I love the idea of recognizing people because again, like the trusted adult. I feel like that's an example of something where you're telling somebody you're making an impact, so keep doing it. I just think that's an awesome thing that people appreciate, you know? That recognition doesn't cost us anything to give, but it's a valuable person gets it.
Sometimes that can be a huge difference on a bad day, right?
It encourages people to do more of the stuff you want them to do. Well done.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Love the metric. That's awesome. Next up, Academic Services Report: Testing Schedule Assessment Program.
Yes, so in your consent agenda items later, you'll have both of these items. And so just wanted to give you guys a heads up about what they were ahead of time. This is something that every year we have to bring to you all. And so our district testing, I call it the assessment plan. Policy calls it the district testing plan. So it is what it is. So really what it is, is a list of all of the assessments that we give our students, whether it's in the Sped Department or in Reg Ed or ELL. All of the assessments that we can give, when we give it, to general ed, to all students. For example, the windows for Galileo testing, when we do state testing. All of that information's in there, but also all of the tests that the psych examiners give as well. And there's a lot of them. So it just depends on what's needed. The only big change this year, and really it's a, last year was a transition year from the cogat to the magliary for all of the different IQ testing. And I think there's, are there some other things on there as well, Mandy?
Mainly for the group IQ for second grade and then for any new students to the district.
Yep. So that's the biggest change. And then the people in different positions at the very end on the committee. And that's, that's really it. We haven't changed a whole lot for that. And then, you know, for, we're still sticking with dibbles for this year. We've got another exemption year from the state for reading assessment because we're challenging some things and they're actually listening to us and we're having conversations about some things. And so hopefully they'll either continue that or maybe make some changes at the state level. So we'll knock on some wood here and hope that happens. And so that's the assessment plan. Lots of updating on that one from year to year just to make sure that that's right.
Just a quick side question?
Yeah, go ahead.
On age and grades, some of them are like 21,11 and 79. What does that mean? Is that an age or?
So it can be ages. Some of those are months of age.
Yeah. Some of them are grade levels and some of them are age levels. It just depends on how the test reports what they.
All right, like there's one that's birth to 90.
Yeah. It's literally birth.
Yeah, she says, yeah, that's exactly what it is.
You get a lot of them.
That's good marketing. They can apply that forever.
That's right.
But you hit 91.
They got no use.
That's right. Curriculum updates, we did all of foreign language. So all of our Spanish classes for this coming school year are on there. And then last year, we realized that about halfway through this year, that we did not get the sociology class approved officially last year. And I think we only had one section of it in the spring and that's when we caught it, whenever it started. And so we put it on there as well, kind of going backwards. They really haven't changed a ton through this year, except for their assessments in the upcoming year. And so we put it back on there for this year. If you guys have any questions about that curriculum.
Is French gone?
French is gone, except through, we've got some plans for those students to continue to take through launch those courses. High school's working on getting that scheduled right now and getting it set up. And so those students will continue to do French just until we, you know, don't have that.
Phase them out, basically, yeah.
I think we're at 46 students that were in that right now. And then they can choose, you know, if they want to or not, if they want to switch to Spanish. Because you pick Spanish one and French one, it still takes for college. So let's see, what choices those students make whenever they come back. One thing that we are doing with curriculum, this is a part of, goes back to lead three, is consistency across the curriculum. So they went through the exact same process as ELA and math and social studies has so far. Making sure that, you know, they got their pacing, that they've got their assessments, that all of it's aligned and ready to go anytime anybody wants to look at it. And so they've got, we've also added EL and some more Sped Services pieces that weren't in foreign language the last time that they did it. And so they had a good discussion around that when they were writing this, so.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Treasurer Finance Report. Mr. Duda.
So this is, I'm not going to call it the absolute final, but this is the fund balance report for 2425. What I brought you last month was projected. This is more final. We'll go through, make sure that we have everything booked properly. But it shouldn't change that much. Ending fund balance is 35.66% right now. We had projected a 34.97, so a little better than we thought. But we're also lowering the transfer to Capital Projects Fund. We have accrued for 1.9 million transfer for DESI. I have it in the system right now as a million. And lowering the transfer to a million keeps the general fund more balanced. And this is where the higher ending fund balance this year to go into 2526. Does anybody have any questions about that? Lowering the transfer still gives us a 4.6 million dollar balance in Capital Projects Fund, which is a good fund balance to have. The million dollars covers some projects that we thought we would specifically do and still gives us some excess balance in the account. Does anybody have any questions on that? In February, we had approved for us to refinance some bonds. We were finally able to do that this month. So on July 8th, we actually sold some bonds we refinanced, our 2006, some of our 2016 bonds. There's two payments that were pulled off. So we'll have a little bit of 2016 bonds remaining, about 2.5 million. And they were pulled off because the interest rate on those payments was lower than what we were going to get now. So the ones that we refinanced had a 4% interest rate and we were able to lower that to 3.3%. And that is giving us the savings of $307,400 for the last close bonds. We've got our preliminary assess valuation numbers in. This is a reinvestment year for us. I had budgeted 3% for 2526. And the preliminary numbers are coming in good. They're actually a little bit higher. But when it goes to the state calculation, that we will not have access to the full. Well, I already know that. So we'll have, the Board of Equalization will meet next week. And then they'll release the final numbers to us. And in August, we'll be approving our tax levy. And then we're also watching some of our revenues. There's been a lot going around about federal funds being held. Our 21st Century Grant Funds, which is our after-school care program funds, those were released. So that was good. We are still watching title. We have some of our title funding that's being held and AEL funds. But we're trying to be proactive with it, make adjustments, and we should do more in September. That's good. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you. And I guess just for the boards, Claire, we just make sure, so like we leverage Stiefel and others to help with the refinancing and.
So Stiefel is our editor for our bonds and then Gilmore Bell is the attorneys. And so Stiefel really takes the lead on that and helps us with the refinancing. And one thing I thought that was really cool is the lady who sold our bonds, her family is local to this area. I'm not positive she's a Central graduate, but I know that she is from Cape and.
We'll say she is.
Yeah.
Don't let facts get in the way of a good story.
This is the second time that she has sold our bonds. So that's really cool that she was able to do that for us.
She actually put off some things.
Yeah, she actually was taking a leave, a leave of absence, and she put it off so that she could sell bonds.
Wow.
Awesome.
When you refinance bonds, do you pay like a closing cost? You do?
Yes. So there's a closing cost that gets paid to Stiefel, to the attorneys. There's some other like auditors and stuff that review standard and fours. You have to go through a range of calls. So there are closing costs. It was like $160,000.
All right, well, thank you very much. Support Services Report. Mr. Crowe.
Thank you. So going back to the first topic that Lindsay spoke about, the 1 million in the fund form. So part of that plan and utilizing those funds for the federal member of our district and tying into our long-range facility plan, very soon I'm going to be releasing an RFP to work with a energy efficiency company that will come in and help us strategically look at all the various different projects. Some of this is outside of the scope of what our maintenance department can do with still doing their daily duties. So we'll have some that are bit out. You'll start kind of seeing that play out this school year. There will also be some other projects that you will see completed that aren't under the banner of energy efficiency savings. But it's still smaller projects that were targeted within the long-range facility plan. And there's a means to the madness or a strategy in doing that. So we're again utilizing our taxpayer dollars and being good stewards of resources and getting done what we can get done. That'll then parlay into potentially opening up bond issue in April. That'll be a no tax increase. Currently, right now, our maintenance department is finishing up a lot of their summer work. If you recall, over the last several years, there's been a backlog of some things that we could push off because we were doing Red Star. We had the welding lab. We had the indoor facility, various things like that. And our maintenance department is utilized in such a manner to allow us to decrease our spending on those projects because we can do some aspects of those projects in-house. So we're very fortunate. So they're getting a backlog of projects done. This week's going to be a little difficult on them with the weather, but we're keeping an eye on that. We have set up our training dates for our bus monitors coming back. And also we have dates set up for our regular bus drivers through Robinson for Sped training. I know Mandy was working on that this morning. And then we also have some plans with our food and service and the changes that we have there. Everything is lining up. We've already got all of our menuing options set through the month of October, so we're not going to be skipping a beat. Now, there may be a Christo Day we throw in there to surprise the kids every once in a while, but all in all, they'll be set. So when it comes to support services, we're moving right along. Questions? All we have any answer?
Thank you very much, sir.
Let me, I will add, July 30th, there will be increased law enforcement presence at a few of our buildings. So that's their training. It keeps us safe, keeps them safe. And so we're keeping a little bit of that close to our chest. But July 30th, there'll be an increased presence of law enforcement, particularly with Kiggar County Sheriff's Office coming in and utilizing our buildings for training. So we're glad that opened up our doors for them and to do that.
Thank you, sir. District Wide Athletics Report.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Just a few things. First, thanks to the Booster Club Golf Tournament was a great success. Had a lot of really great compliments throughout the day about how we all really ran. It was hot, but we had, it was still better than getting rained on. So it was awesome. I'm here tonight mainly to talk about Senate Bill 63 that passed in the last legislative session.
So far, Lindsay has stolen a thing I was going to talk about, and now you are stealing a thing I'm going to talk about. I will just leave.
Well, we felt it was important because we were going to have to have some policy provisions that'll come to you in August. So we thought it was important to kind of give you a little bit of a preview of that and kind of just some language that you can hear from me and some of the things that are already out there. And in case you do have some people ask you questions about it. So just some backstories. Our current student participation, how student participation works for athletics and activities in high school and junior high, is that student participation was limited to full-time enrolled students up until a few years ago. And then over the last few years, as a way, the association, our state association, we should try to keep in base of those that don't go to our school buildings, don't come to our school buildings, tenor schools. We did, they did propose and we voted into the constitute, our bylaws, non-traditional ways to be involved in activities, right? So again, the traditional is you come to school every day, right? And you come to class. Non-traditional one in our bylaws is virtual post-secondary work study, but those are all high school transcripted credits. So we actually use, utilize some of that with our Flex program and when our kids go to Mac or CMO or some of our post-secondary education. We do not, as part of our board policy, allow for virtual activities. People to be able to use transcripted credit from virtual classes to our, to be able to participate. Non-traditional two was added as well, and this, we don't do this as a school district either. This is just an option for some. That one was seat time of at least two credit-bearing classes. And then all other credits have to have approval by the school with a procedure that they choose. Not very many students use non-traditional two across the state, but there are a few. Senate Bill 63 was signed into law by the governor earlier this month and will go into effect on August 28th. The basics, school districts cannot prohibit students living in the district from attending a homeschool, a family-paced education school, or a virtual school from participating in any event or activity offered by the district or the attendance area the student lives in. So homeschooled, for those, that's the traditional, homeschooling, you know, parent at home, using whatever means that they, be necessary, either off the internet or throughout, I mean, the old school is they get books sent to the school. My cousins that were homeschooled, so I know a little bit about that traditional way of homeschooling. There is no funding, like, they don't get state voucher money for that. Jesus, for religious reasons or their own personal reasons. Family-paced education, that is a little bit different. FPE schools are, they do enroll students who receive state credit money, so vouchers for them, but they don't charge enrollment fees. Again, if they're a part of that P E, they can, they can get voucher money. Uh, again, if they're a part of that P E, they can, they they can get voucher money uh from the state. A virtual school, even though the law doesn't define it, that's basically mocap and we have a private contract for virtual school. Uh, school districts cannot, well, this is another key to this, and and had Brian add the email from Dr. Ruckstead to your uh information. School districts cannot belong to Michigan if its rules violate this, all right? That's part of the way the state legislature uses, say, hey, they write that into the bills that they want to make sure Michigan follows. So expanded student participation, what it looks like. So full-time, homeschool, family-paced education students, virtual students will have access to Michigan activity, interclassics, athletics, our sport teams, activities like band, cheer, choir, uh as well as co-curricular activities like DECA, yearbook, at the school district in which they reside. They must require approval residency, a physical to participate in sports, follow the same behavior, responsibilities, performance, codes, conduct standards that we have in place, and the same financial statements as long as, as financial requirements as long as they're same across the board. Uh, we can require, as the schools are required, can require attendance of rehearsals, practice sessions, or training sessions that are directly related to and required for trying out for the sport or uh activity. Uh, completion of required coursework, for example, fine arts, and we have band in today, they can be required to attend school for uh for fine arts, uh period technical education. Compliance with disciplinary policy, attendance policy, uh and compliance with academic requirements. Now, you know, for you to be a an athlete or in a sport or or activity at the high school, junior high level, there there's a pretty long list of things that have to happen. Now, for the most part, those things are already happening, right? We just have to make sure that they're being covered and that the kids know that they can't do X, Y, and Z. Uh, the the biggest one is our academic requirements. You have to have three units of credit, you have to be enrolled in at least three units of credit, and you have to, which is six, six out of your seven classes and and pass those. And then that rolls forward your enrollment or your your eligibility each semester. So you pass three, you know, you take seven classes, you flunk one, you're still eligible for the next, for the next semester's sports. This bill, parents are responsible, this is being the most laughable part of the bill, to be honest. Parents are responsible for oversight of academic standards in homeschool F P E schools. So that's the part that public schools, well, all schools have an issue with is that we hold our students to a specific standard. They have to have this to be able to participate, all right? If they don't, they can't participate. In this case, we ask the parent, which again, the things that we're going to give them is be able to give us some guidance on what forms to use, how, what procedures and all those things. But ultimately, the parent says, yeah, my kid passed.
Mm-hmm.
Now, virtual school's a little tougher because they have to actually submit what what's been done on the virtual school. Some of this, I mean, it's still not fleshed out exactly how that's all going to happen. It does create, in my mind, a separate set of standards for for these students in Conchester or, which doesn't, you know, sit well with most people that are in public education or involved with athletics in any way. This does not cover pro here or private schools. And what that means, they put that in the law for, you know, just because a student goes here and they may go to uh another school in our in our area, that's, if they live here, they can't participate for us. Uh, for example, the the academy in Lynnwood, if they went, they had a high school student there, they couldn't come play for us because they're, they live in our district. So that that's part of the, part of the law. M S B A has recently provided guidance to schools for revision of board policies in relation to this bill. Mr. Payne, Dr. Beck, Dr. Bennett, and I will introduce that in proceeding those policies, you will use it for revision of the August fourth meeting. In addition, school building administration will be alerted tomorrow to scour their student handbooks for any procedures that might contradict this. Michigan is preparing a special ballot for August for membership to vote on these changes. Our executive director bluntly stated that we don't really have an option, we have to vote for it. Otherwise, it's a school that can't be, that would be a possibility. The the bill says basically you can't be a part of Michigan, school district can't be a part of Michigan, that happens. Uh, we we've used every tool at our disposal to fight this particular bill. Dr. Beck wrote a letter to our legislators earlier this year. Myself and other local A D have offered our support to the state association through Dr. Ruckstead. For testimony, the state senator was contacted early in the process and he voted no on the bill and it's finally one of the three senators that did vote no. So we're happy with that. Uh, this, I mean, Michigan's been fighting this particular thing for as long as I've been in athletics, uh, in high school athletics. And I I don't know that the association realized how strongly this bill was being pushed and it got overwhelming in support across the state. So it's it's disappointing that this is what we're dealt, we need to deal with. We're going to have to, it's a state law now, we have to.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You could correct me if I'm wrong, but the classifications for what level our school participates is based on enrollment?
Yes.
So if we're class five in a particular sport based on our current enrollment, how would they judge how enrollment would increase? Is it based on how many homeschool kids are in, living within your district? Or is it how many that would actually participate in the sports would increase the enrollment?
That's a great question and honestly, that has not been, of the stuff Michigan has sent us, that's one of the things they have not addressed.
Because, also correct me if I'm wrong, and within the last three years, our enrollment has been within like three to five students, which has put us in an upper class level.
Football was kind of in the middle of class five. Baseball, you know, track this year, there was two students in class five. They were, we were the smallest classified school. So depending on sport, yes, we are on the border in some sports.
I feel like this would be a major leverage point to argue this point because I would want clarification on how that would affect our school district primarily and what class our kids have to participate or compete in based on enrollment.
Yeah, I I'd be, I think one of the key things, this Michigan, when I talked to Dr. Ruckstead and was that March? I think that was when you wrote the letter. I talked to her, I called her in Dr. Beck's office and said, hey, look, I, we rounded up some guys, come up, and gals, and hey, come up there and we'll do testimony in front of the whatever. And she said, I don't think it's going to be necessary. The more it got, it it just kept driving me to speak. Uh, it it's interesting because the guy that put this together is the guy from Washington. There's homeschool associations across the state that didn't want anything to do with this.
Mm-hmm.
And I told him, we don't want you, we don't want you to be there, we don't want your activities. And it has been a wisdom he's got right up there. So I'll I'll just, it ended up getting passed out. To your question about classification, so we we turn in an enrollment number at the end of uh March. Every year, there's a, there's a window between April fourteenth and April fifteenth. And we turn in what our uh our numbers are nine through eleven this year, right?
On like a specific day or does it cover? It's on a specific day?
Uh, this year, I think it was March twenty-eighth.
Okay.
That's the date. We had to pull our data from 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 uh from IC. Right, so we pull a specific, I mean, they have a enrollment declaration. Uh, Dr. Patrick always pulls it forward, so we review it and make sure it's correct and then we we send it in. As we prefer, it's a day, it's just nine through eleven, right? And this is a change that happened about five, six years ago. It's to give you a more accurate representation of your kids that's going to be in school next year. If you student did two-year classifications and then what would happen is we could be influenced.
The numbers.
Yeah.
It it's really a more accurate statement. So what would happen is if we had a homeschool student, now they are going to go on our master student list, even though they're not our student, that is one thing that they told us. They will be, there will be a traditional option three, that's a non-traditional option three, that's, we'll be able to pick those kids, you know, put our kids in this, so that's student master, master student list. Then they'll go on our enrollment declaration in March, March twenty-eighth, all right? And the reason they use that is because all the spring sports have already started, so we know all of the kids that are going to be on those eligibility rosters.
Okay.
But we can only do it with kids who are active. We can't do it for kids who are homeschooled because now there's no declaration of homeschool to the school district anymore.
Yeah.
At the, this is within the same bill.
So it would be homeschool kids who are currently playing for us? Then they.
Cause we can't count fifth.
Then they go on the.
For the next year.
So I I'm assuming that the web developers at Michigan are, when they, when, if we have any non-traditional three students on our master student list that are on eligibility rosters for sports, they will be added to our enrollment declaration that we put a, put a um on uh Michigan in in early March, very early April. One, one key to that, one thing they haven't really addressed yet, which is going to be interesting, is transfers. So in the bill, it is written, the language, and they they worked with the guy to make sure this was in there, that if if a if a student said, you know, gets halfway through his fall semester and realizes he's not going, I'm not going to pass. And he drops out and he enrolls as a homeschool student, either somewhere else or here, the transfer rules are supposed to still apply, right? Now, I I've been at enough transfer meetings and appeals meetings and dealt with enough of these to know that that they're always away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And uh, so it's going to be interesting to see how they deal with those. They say it's going to be the same transfer rules, those students are still, have to apply by the transfer rules.
Sir, do they have, obviously, there's a lot of potential pitfalls that we don't totally know until things play out. But like, does, has anybody had some sort of sense of like, how many additional students?
I'm wondering that too. Like, have you gotten much contact from parents asking who are homeschool parents or?
Now, I've had previous conversations with students asking to be a part of our programs as homeschoolers. Either they were told something, they didn't have all the information.
Yeah.
So I've been, in my six years here, I've been contacted by homeschool parents like, hey, and I, you know, I'm doing custom funding for you. Yeah.
From the Christian homeschool parents?
There is. But it's, it's a, as far as the number, I know Jamie, you said a number one time. Do you know how many students homeschool?
Homeschool?
Know of that have declared?
I checked with Tina today. She said on the normal year, we'll have around about a number somewhere close to fifty per year, district-wide.
Yeah, so that's from, you know.
So. K twelve.
We don't know the total impact, uh, but we also don't know what our, what the parents will be.
First, first to twelfth.
This is an option.
Sure. And Crystal, to answer your question, we've had one very specific parent call the district register office and ask, if my student goes into high school and participates in mocap, can they play athletics at the high school? So we've only had one.
Okay.
So far.
Yeah.
I have another clarifying question. So there are of the three different groups, homeschool and then F P E and mocap kids. F P E and mocap get a voucher, right? Or do they get a refund?
Virtual, I don't know.
On their taxes?
They'll be attending another school district on mocap, but they can, they can attend our extracurricular.
I, the question I'm asking is more about like the tax money that they are.
The F P E applies to voucher programming and credit-based, like, you know, resources. For mocap, what they're doing is they're stealing our dollars on the kids and that's going to the vendor.
But we still have to provide.
But that's, that's the question that I'm asking.
Yeah.
So we would still.
We still have to provide it.
Provide uniforms and all of that unless it's like.
They get the A D A.
Swim team or something where they buy.
The sending school gets A D A.
Unless we set a fee that penalizes our own in-person.
Right, right. Yep.
Then we couldn't charge them. And that's a good point you bring up because Tyson wasn't going to talk about this.
Oh, sorry.
You were talking about homeschool people being against this. What's not talked about is probably the mocap vendors that were for it.
Of course.
Because that is a huge revenue generator for them.
Benefit for them.
Because the whole back to students being virtual is for was you couldn't participate in athletics. You couldn't do all these things. Well, now, they've opened the doors for that.
There's no approval.
So.
There's just no cap. I mean, the biggest, you know, we don't know the impact for what's going to happen with the high school next year, junior high for for that matter. But it's the philosophical part, we have no, we have no ways to hold you accountable.
Mm-hmm. There's a second set of standards. Yeah.
Exactly, which I mean, it's just not fair.
The transfer thing you brought up is going to be the biggest issue they're going to face.
Uh-huh.
Is when somebody who's very athletically gifted in some district doesn't pass classes and somebody says they'll give them a spot. You need to homeschool.
Yeah.
Which I'm interested to see, obviously, like I said, Michigan, I feel like I kind of got caught in a little flat foot on this, but when they, I'm on the transfer and registry requirements committee that they're trying to revise the transfer registry. So I'm interested to see what happens in that meeting in September that I'm in, how this affects those discussions. There's twenty-two people on this committee, which is always.
That's a lot.
So I, we'll just have to see what happens, come out of that. But you're exactly right, somebody's going to challenge it.
When you said you're voting, like, the vote that you said you're having is a vote among athletic directors?
The only people that go vote is superintendents, so.
So superintendent votes as to whether or not they think this is a good idea or whether or not we're choosing to participate in it?
No, I, they haven't sent out the ballot yet, so I don't know what the language is going to read, but what I'm assuming is going to happen is they're going to say this is non-traditional three uh to to comply with Senate Bill sixty-three, which is now, which is going to be a state law. They've already granted relief from the bylaw for these kids' participates because a lot of it will affect the law since twenty-eight. Well, we've already started following practices.
Right.
So they've already granted a by, uh, relief for those students participate going forward, but once the law goes into effect, uh, basically, she just said, this isn't a, there's no question, you have to vote yes for this. Now, it's going to pass, but the majority of people are going to say, well, we have to apply state law and move on, even if you vote no, it's not there and kick you out, Michigan.
That's fun.
Any other questions?
Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, board reports, M S B A delegate, Dr. Fegley.
I don't have anything.
Fantastic. All right, we'll go on.
Fantastic.
Lady report got shorter. Lady report.
That was so much more thorough than anything I was going to say, so that was fantastic. Lindsay, too, thank you. You talked much more thoroughly than I would have on on the topic of federal funds being held. You definitely know more than me since your hands are all in the financial side. So the only thing I have to say is Missouri budget is officially signed by Governor Quixote. Um, so the foundation formula for twenty-six, twenty-seven school year is seven thousand one hundred forty-five per student. Um, the governor does have the ability to veto line items and he did for several educational things. However, I actually emailed Ms. Dudek asking her if any of that affected us and I don't believe at the Missouri level that it is. So luckily, we're okay on that. Um, and that's all I got.
Thank you for giving other people your work.
Yes. Delegating.
Any foundation updates?
Um, you kind of stole some of my thunder on that, but I'm still.
We're all sharing, this is teamwork.
I know it is teamwork, isn't it? Collaboration. Um, the alumni and supporter mix and mingle was a huge success. Tons of people showed up, it was hot. They stayed inside a lot. Um, also, we're currently, currently receiving financial donations as well as school supplies from several business partners, churches, and individuals. And I think I saw something today that if you need on social media.
Yeah, there's a form.
If you need helpless, um, school supplies to fill at that form, so just clean it out there in case anybody is watching. That's all I have for that.
Awesome, thank you. All right, next up, approval of consent agenda items. So you guys hopefully had a chance to look through all these, read through them, and then we'll make some motions. So minutes from June twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, regular and special meetings, payment of bills, curriculum adoptions for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, testing and assessment schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six. Jamie Russell is coordinator of the assessment testing program. Brian Payne is Title Nine coordinator. Mandy Keys is Section five oh four and A D A coordinator. Mandy Keys is liaison for homeless children and youth. Mandy Keys is liaison for migrant, E L L, immigrant, and refugee children and youth. Mandy Keys is educational liaison for children in foster care. Chris Jock is district's A H E R A designated person. And board policy, B B F A, board member conflict of interest. We're going to motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved. Second.
Here, Dr. Fegley, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda items are carried. Next up, we will move into our business. Give me a second to get my computer working here. There it goes, it's trying to work. Okay, first up, approval of contractual agreement with Kenny Rogers Centers. The recommendation is to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with the Kenny Rogers Children's Center for Physical Therapy and Occupational Therapy Services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Can we get motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Where? Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
They've done a great job for us, they've been with us for years, they, it's a two-dollar increase, it's not a big increase, so um they work amazing with our staff.
It's not a big increase. So they work amazing with our staff and students. So we'd like to keep working with them.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the recommendation to approve the contract agreement with Kenny Rogers carries. Next up is approval of the contractual agreement with a new outlook for visually impaired orientation and mobility services. So the recommendation is to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with a new outlook LLC for orientation and mobility and vision services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this one?
She had a six-dollar increase. It's very difficult to find a teacher with a visually impaired and certified O N M person. I was that person for our district prior to coming into this role, but she's the only other one literally in our area. So her price did go up six dollars, but I think that's pretty fair. We'd like to keep using her.
Does this service go to like any of the schools where this service is needed?
Yes. She does. It's just one person. We actually went to school with her, Erin Vogel. It was her maiden.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the approval of contractual agreement with a new outlook for visually impaired and orientation and mobility services approved. Next up, approval of contractual agreement with Crystal Weber to provide hearing impaired services. Recommendation is to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with Crystal M. Weber for services to students who are deaf or hard of hearing for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one?
She is actually going to be doing consultative work only with us this year. She did see students in person, but those have, those students have worked down to only needing consult. So she's agreed to stay on and consult with our teachers. And if something were to come up, then we would go from there with her. She's done a great job. No increase on hers, so.
Okay. Any questions, discussions on that one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the approval of contractual agreement, Crystal Weber to provide hearing impaired service carries. Next up, make sure I didn't skip one. Yeah, I didn't. Okay, approval of contractual agreement with Craig Home Care, a P H S company. To authorize superintendent enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with Craig Home Care, a P H S company, C H C, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So you'll see another nursing company on there as well. We have some students who need individual nurses for medical needs. And so we typically try to work with the nursing company that they have already been working with out of their home, just for consistency for the student prior to them coming to us. So that's, we worked with Craig Home Care. Last year, they were called Allen Home Care at one point, and then it went to Craig Home Care. And I think it's actually Craig Resources, a P H C S company, something like that now. So we have a couple of students served by that particular nursing agency. And then there will be one more, Phoenix Home Care, which is for a third student that receives individual nursing.
And so this is support nursing for those students? They come onsite?
Correct. They're with that student the entire time that they're present. That's also reimbursed through Medicaid. So the cost that we pay to them is reimbursed.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion to approve contractual agreement with Craig Home Care carries. Next up, as we were forewarned, is the approval of contractual agreement with Phoenix Home Care and Hospice. Recommendation is to authorize superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with Phoenix Home Care and Hospice for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Can we get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion on that one?
This is the newer one. We have a little one that is coming into kindergarten actually that has a nurse. It's the organization they work with. You'll see that the price on this one is a little bit lesser, lower than the other, but that's because they only provide L P Ns, not R Ns. So other than that, we worked with them mid-year last year as well. So we're just continuing that agreement.
Do you guys like work with the parents on that and like?
Yeah. Some districts don't. They choose to use their own, hire their own nurses. But I have found that we have much better consistency in student care and much better parent satisfaction as well if we try to keep it consistent.
Other discussions, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the approval of contractual agreement with Phoenix Home Care carries. Next up is approval of twenty-five, twenty-six extra duty pay schedule. Recommendation is to adopt the extra duty salary schedule as presented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Square. Second?
Second.
Dr. Fagley, okay, any discussion on this one?
So this schedule, which, I apologize, it's not, you're not able to view it. If you log in, you can view the pay schedule, but it's for extra duty specifically for homebound instruction, tiering, event supervision for S R Os. Those will be paid at thirty-five dollars an hour. These are hourly rates. And then any staff who does professional development, that's less than a full day, would be thirty dollars an hour.
Any questions, discussions on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six extra duty pay schedule carries. Next up is the second reading and adoption of board policies, D F A, D F A two, rescind, D J F A, E G A A, G B C B B, G B E, I G B B, I G B C A, K B and K K. So the recommendation is to adopt the following board policies as recommended by MSBA and the policy review committee as previously stated. I won't read all the alphabet soup again. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussions? You might want to repeat the bingo alphabet. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so those are adopted. Next up is adoption of board policy, G B A. Recommendation is to adopt the board policy, G B A, as recommended by administration. So this was about accruing comp time throughout the school year. Do we, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Perry?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one?
This is just a revision to the existing policy outlining the procedure for accruing comp time. The, the previous policy allowed any level of employee that is an hourly, regardless of the amount of days they work throughout the year. People who are working less than two-hundred-and-forty days per year have very specific workday calendars because of school needs. So we don't really need them accruing comp. We need them just to be paid overtime for hours they work over. Our employees that are working year-round, we still want them to be able to accrue comp and elect to use that if they want to and then be paid out at the end of the year. So that's what this revision actually reflects. So anybody less than two-forty, if they work over, they're paid overtime. If you're two-forty or more, you get the choice to be either be paid overtime or accrue comp. It's pretty standard.
Do I have any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, so that one carries. Next up, approval of reimbursement rate for unused emergency leave days upon retirement. Recommendation is to approve a sliding scale daily reimbursement rate for accumulated sick leave days remaining upon retirement based upon the amount of notice given. Do we have a motion for that one?
So moved.
Square. Dr. Fagley, thank you, guys. Commentary on that one?
Yeah, it's just our annual approval of the payout for retirement notification. Pretty recently, we implemented the sliding scale for teachers. That's kind of starting in November for any hourly employee or support staff. That's called six-month notice. So it differs depending on what level of employee you are, but that payment can start as high as fifty per day and then work all the way back to twenty-five. And that's really helped us out with early notification over the last two school years.
That's good incentive.
So the rates would not change based on this recommendation. We would keep everything the same moving forward.
Does certified staff do their paid absences, their sick days, whatever, do they accrue endlessly?
So they accrue up to a hundred-and-forty days.
Okay.
And then excess of that, that's what the next policy update's going to be for annual.
Great.
It's just that.
Look at that. That's why I asked the question.
That's a great lead. No, so that's excess of unused days during the working year.
Okay.
And then this is just where does the balance fall when I notify for retirement?
Right.
For payout.
Okay.
The unused sick days paid through the year, that's the rate we're recommending is to remain at twenty-five dollars per day.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of reimbursement rate for unused emergency leave days carries and not instead jump to the next one, approval of reimbursement rate for unused emergency leave in excess of maximum. So recommendation to approve the reimbursement rate for unused sick leave days in excess of the maximum accumulated at twenty-five dollars per unused sick leave day per request from Ms. Crystal over there. So can we get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, any conversation, discussion on that one?
That's the one we just ran.
Yeah, it's kind of just.
How often does this happen?
I mean, Lindsay could probably speak to it more than me, but it's pretty common.
Wow.
The accumulating a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
So we have staff that we make a payment every year just to, once you hit it, you're pretty well consistently going to stay there.
Yep.
It's a.
It's not a time, but I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's just a lot of days.
So in your first year, you're going to get about thirteen awarded between sick, personal, everything. And then after that, it's going to be that ten mark, seven and three split, pretty much between sick and personal. Personal can roll over and convert to sick. And then when you get to a certain level of getting vacation, you can roll up to one week of vacation time over too.
Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so approval reimbursement rate for unused emergency leave in excess of maximum carries. And that wraps our business. Information and proposals from board members. Not at all. So we're now at adjournment. And can we motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys, very much.